Live and streaming. And we are also recording, so I will call to order regular meeting thirteen forty-three of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. We are operating under the revised version of the open meeting law by executive order of Governor Charlie Baker. This meeting is being broadcast on Holden TV one ninety-four as well as HoldenTV.com. It will be recorded to be played on the Internet later as well. So if you see the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. First item on the agenda is public gearing. As in the call to meeting, I will momentarily pass that over, although I do want to have one that was sent to me already. First off, I want to post if I can. Again, I'm just Zoom all week before I come back to this. Google thing, alright. So questions@wrst.net. Again, if you have questions during our public hearing, please send them to questions@wrst.net. That just bounces to my email and I will read them. I'm going to read one that was sent to me ahead of the meeting with a request to read it. Then we will pass the rest of public hearing over until after the item four on the agenda. So if people wish to send in questions after they've heard the report. So one item that was brought to me for public hearing was sent to me by today by by let me get the person who actually sent it. There's a lot of signatures to the letter. Person who sent the letter was Mr. Mike Dibzinski. And the message says, Dear Mr. Mills, members of the WRSD School Committee, thank you for your leadership during these unprecedented times. We can't even begin to imagine the financial logistical complexity of all you are managing right now. Purpose of this letter is to seek compensation for the WRHS Spring Athletic Coaches. Prior to March sixteenth, we were required to attend or complete the following mandatory certification of CPR AED for WRSD policy, mandatory attendance at Midwack League Spring Coaches Meetings, attend specific sport new rules interpretations, attend Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Meetings, organize and discuss digital student registration processes, review eligibility of potential student participants, review academic standing of potential team members, counsel students and parents on the collegiate athletic recruiting process, communicate and promote student athletes to collegiate coaches, answer parent and student concerns and questions, promote student athletes with local news media, inventory equipment, discuss upcoming schedules and plan for preseason tryout and practice schedule. Although our contests and practices are specific to the spring, our jobs and responsibilities are year-round, we have adjusted our personal schedules and refrained from seeking other employment due to the continued changing date of our seasons by the MIAA and cancellation of school put forth by Governor Baker on April twenty-first. We are similar to the superior classroom teacher who begins planning for the next school year at the conclusion of the previous year. Our classroom is a field, court, track, or other venue, and we pursue the same level of expertise and success. We are a voice of reason and are not seeking a full salary. We seek twenty-five percent of our salary that is equitable to the value of our work and for the amount of time that we have performed our duties. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation in this matter. Respectfully yours, Mr. Philip Jackson, Head Boys Lacrosse Coach, Mr. Derek Von Duvenhovey, Assistant Boys Lacrosse Coach, Mrs. Emily Rainiak, Head Girls Lacrosse Coach, Mrs. Cassidy Windler, Assistant Girls Lacrosse Coach, Mr. Kevin Briggs, Boys Track Coach, Mr. Michael O'Malley, Girls Track Coach, Mr. Patrick Bova, Assistant Track Coach, Mr. Oscar Esposito, Assistant Track Coach, Mr. Dan Gennarelli, Head Baseball Coach, Mr. Matt Lane, Assistant Baseball Coach, Mrs. Pauline Smith, Girls Tennis Coach, and Mr. Peter Cranston, Head Boys Volleyball Coach. So that was sent to me with a request to be read in public hearing. Again, it's the only thing I had for public hearing. Ahead of time, I will return to this item after the superintendent's report. Next item on the agenda is Chair's opening remarks. Again, I just want to hand out a thank you to all of our staff and faculty for all the hard work they've been doing during this time, to administration for all their hard work, and to parents and families for their flexibility during this really, really difficult time. As a committee, we get a lot of emails. We get a lot of concerns. There's a lot of things on our mind. I hope that as a committee tonight and our next few weeks, we can start to refocus in on two things that I think are really central to our role as a school committee. One, we need to contingency plan for the curriculum next year. Probably a little too early. There's too many unknowns to do that, but we need to be informed and discussing what that's going to look like. Two is budget. Budget is one of our main responsibilities. Again, I'm going to have Subcommittee Chair Dennis lead off our discussion of the report, hopefully to focus some conversation around that. Other school committees have been discussing revised budgets. They've been discussing how to deal with potential twenty percent reductions in state aid for next year. It's something that we as a committee need to turn our full attention to. There's deadlines in less than a month that we need to attend to for how we're going to deal with budgets. I hope we can really focus in and at the very least request and demand, I guess, the information that we need to make good budget decisions in the next few weeks. So I hope that we can focus our thoughts a little bit on that tonight. The next item on the agenda is the Student Representatives Reports. How many students have reports that they wish to share?
So we know that this week, we're starting up our AP exam. So they started today and they're going to continue through the twenty-second. And me and Rihanna, we're just like talking about, we're wondering if there is a survey that might be possible just to the high school students because I've still been hearing that the workload is like a lot and it, so we're hoping that like maybe we'll be able to survey more students. That way it's like not all the grades, but high school and more specifically.
And we did look at what you had sent in your report. And so the data reported is based off of the whole district. And so it doesn't really reflect if there's differences between individual schools, which the high school might not be the only one. We hear a lot from the high school because we're in the high school, but it might not be the only one where students are having issues. And so it might help to look at the individual school by school basis and to see more of that data if it's possible. And then also, I'm happy to announce there's a ton of updates on the senior activities for the end of this year. So there was a senior webpage, the graduation page that was created on the class of twenty-twenty website that details all of this. But so seniors' last day is May twenty-second, so it's a week from Friday. And there will be a virtual graduation ceremony, as I believe I mentioned before. And so they're still in the process of planning that, but there's more info to come on that soon. And so there'll still be student speeches given. And also, we'll still have class marshals as well, and voting for that is taking place right now. And then on June fourth, a seventeen-foot LED ball will be lit up at Holden Town Hall from nine AM to ten thirty PM, which will have pictures of all the seniors who submit photos by this Friday. And then on June fourth as well, the high school will be lit up in green and white from eight thirty to ten thirty PM. Then that Saturday, June sixth, there will be a rolling rally parade, which will go thirty-three miles all throughout the five towns to celebrate all of the senior class. And then on May twenty-second, caps and gowns are going to be distributed to the class with varying pickup times according to last names. So it's all throughout that day. And as well as, that's when we'll be dropping off Chromebooks, textbooks, the Chromebook chargers, and any other school property that seniors might have. And more info is supposed to be coming out soon about cleaning out our lockers, class stews, and potentially a partial return of parking fees. A lot of stuff coming there, but all good news.
Alright, thank you both. Does anybody have any questions or do you have anything for the student reps?
You know, I just want to thank both of them for their work that they've been doing on this. I know, Rihanna, you've been working with the senior class on pulling all these events together. And I know how challenging it is. We had to sit through, my wife and I and my son Connor just sat through the Education Department's UMass Virtual Program the last Thursday evening. And I have to let you know, it was touching. They did a great job. It was still very emotional. You know, it's not the same. So I understand what you are all going through and especially what your parents are going through because it's a, it's a big deal for parents to watch their kids go through this process. So I really appreciate all the hard work you're putting into making this, making this something that is worthwhile for everyone.
Alright, thank you. So Member Hobbes has a comment. Do you want to make it, Sherri?
Rihanna, if this is your last meeting, I just wanted to say thank you so much. You've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. It's been great to be on the committee and I've loved it. I'm sure you've loved all of my hot takes, so thank you.
And in the same way that our terms are extended against some people's wills, we are willing to have your term extended against your will as well, also if you so wish. Thanks to both of you for your service this year, to Ali as well. Alright, so next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. So what I want to do is I want to turn the floor to the Superintendent for his association of the report, then I'm going to turn it to Member Dennis for a brief update from Business and Finance, because I do want us to be thinking about that during our discussion of the report, even though it wasn't a lot in the report. And then, and then we'll open the floor to questions. Daryl?
Sure, thank you, Ken. So, you know, first and foremost, as Ken mentioned, you know, I have to give all my thanks out to the families and the kids and the teachers who continue to work so diligently, all the support staff. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of, you know, sitting in front of a computer and we understand that's not always easy. And I really appreciate how hard all the families are, you know, working in terms of supporting kids and so forth, and teachers and support staff doing what they can as well. When we're kind of in a process of looking at, you know, a budget, we had the opportunity to meet with Business and Finance last week. I'll just highlight, you know, one thing, the process that we're going through right now, and that's talking with the unions about where we might be for FY twenty-one and kind of the realities associated with the FY twenty-one budget. We have had, you know, not a lot of news at the state level in terms of talking about what some of the different numbers that might be coming from the state are. You know, I can tell you that FY, I'm sorry, the COVID money, the COVID nineteen funds that were distributed by the federal government to the state, those are now available for us to go in. There's an RFP that was just put out by DESI. We're looking at probably in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range in terms of an overall amount. And that money can be spent between now and September of two thousand twenty-two. So it's a long-term amount of money and it just carries forward. So it's something that we could, you know, put forward into next year's budget. Director Deedee is going to sit in on a conference call, on a webinar on this, I think, next week, and then we'll get moving with this, you know, entire process. There was also a SWIG grant that we ended up getting, which is about seventy-two thousand dollars. It will help us with, you know, replacing a lot of the older water faucets in our, in many of our buildings with water filling stations. So that was, you know, good news in light of everything else that's going on. You know, one of the things that we've been talking about internally is also how we can move forward with, you know, details around the budget and details around what we're going to need to do. And we've been working collectively and one of the things that I've been responding to individual school committee members, you know, over the past week and a half or so around some of their questions on, you know, what steps are we going to take? How, you know, what might this look like? Where might we be? How can we be more involved? And that's exactly, I believe, what Chair Mills talked about today. So what we're going to be doing moving forward is really looking at a process that allows us to have a more cohesive plan of action to kind of, to move forward. We don't know what we're going to get for funds. We just have to work under the umbrella of a one-twelfth budget for next year. A one-twelfth budget for next year means over a four million dollar reduction in terms of the projected FY twenty-one budget versus our current budget. That difference is what we're talking about. So when we talk about some of the different items that we need to put out there for all of you, there are going to be many conversations that need to be had, and they need to be had soon because we're going to have to make some tough decisions. So I appreciate all of you reaching out to me. I appreciate the fact that people are going to get involved and we need to get involved. I think if we're in a situation where we get some more information, that would be helpful, but I don't believe we will be. So again, you know, we had the opportunity to meet with Business and Finance last week. Member Dennis will give you more of an update in terms of our meeting there.
Alright, Mike, not to put you on the spot, but could you give a brief update for our Business and Finance meeting last week, just so we can set our conversation with regards to our Superintendent's Report?
Sure. So, you know, a couple of things I think that I would add to Superintendent's description. Excuse me. You know, the statement that there's probably not a lot more that we're going to learn is a statement that I would agree with. I think that we've been hearing through our legislators that it's not likely that we're going to hear much about new state budget numbers until the summer and probably not until sometime in July. So there is a call here for planning. There is an urgency that I think has been building certainly amongst the members of Business Finance and I think for others, as we try to seek clarity through this process. And again, you know, I think of this, you know, Daryl mentioned a couple of things. He mentioned one-twelfth budget. You know, again, I think of this in terms of three valves that have an impact here. One is the valve of going to the fiscal twenty levels through one-twelfth budget. And as Daryl mentioned, that's about a four-point-three million dollar impact. There's a cash flow or potentially a cash flow impact because we're restricted by being able to spend one-twelfth of that dollar amount in any particular month. And again, depending on when we have a higher frequency of payrolls in a particular month, when we need, you know, certain large expenses like benefits to be paid, that very well may have an impact. And it's not an impact we want to wait until the middle of the school year to identify and mitigate. But third, and the one that we haven't talked about much here, is the impact from state aid. And if we go back to, you know, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty oh eight, two thousand and eight, and we think about the impact to state aid at that time, it was about a twenty-eight percent impact. You know, we're hearing different advisories from different places and it'll continue to, you know, take shape over time. But we receive about thirty million dollars in state aid as the district. If a twenty percent impact to thirty million dollars, the six million dollar impact. So as you can imagine, if you start to build these impacts together, four million dollars, six million dollars potentially, cash flow impact, it's a rather substantive impact that not just Wachusett is feeling, but districts across the Commonwealth and I'm sure across the country are feeling. And we need to start planning for it. There are time triggers with respect to different types of decisions that can and should or could be made, that whether it's in terms of looking at revised budgets, whether it's in terms of looking at E and D, whether it's in terms of looking at other types of options that have time sensitivity to it. And, you know, looking at the calendar today, it's May eleventh. So, you know, I hear that, you know, there's a calling for a cohesive plan of action that we're expected to see. I could tell you that I and the members of the Business Finance Committee are urgently awaiting that plan and feel it's probably a bit past due for that plan to emerge.
Alright, so with that tidy enthusiastic moment, I'm going to go around the table to look for comments. We'll have the last be first and the first be last, or whatever it is. We'll let Adam go first, since he never gets to go first as our last member, and then we'll go to Melissa and go through the alphabet that way. So does Member Young wish to start with comments?
Sure. I mean, just as it goes to the report, you know, I feel a little bad going off topic from the budget at the moment, but just some of the questions I had were, for the remote access survey, you know, one of the things was that, you know, it was great, ninety-five point five percent was positive on being able to access the materials online. But, you know, I am a little worried that it could be skewed, that the people that looked at the, they were able to respond are people that have access online. So I guess my question is, have we reached down through the teachers to kind of get a real good look at if they're hitting a hundred percent of their classroom? If there's students that are just not coming in very, very consistently and you're reaching out to those families?
So, good question, Adam. Yeah, one of the things that we had principals do, starting three weeks ago when we first put the plan in place, was keep track of students who were kind of intermittent, who weren't consistent, and also ones that we have not been able to get through to. So principals have actually been reaching directly out to those families to make contact with them. Some of them are, you know, again, I think in certain situations, it's a little more challenging to try to be home with kids and also work. So I think some of that has come into play. And it's no fault of anyone's, it's just the circumstances under which people are trying to live right now. So that is something that we're following through with, and we continue to do that. You know, looking at wellness checks, you know, with our local police departments in case, you know, we're unable to make any contact. And I can tell you, those are things that we've also followed through with.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure it's something that stays up on our radar. The other question I had just in general about the report, you know, we're looking at the, you know, we'll discuss the paraprofessionals MOA. There was a topic in there about the REA MOA, although I didn't see one attached. But is there any, is there any movement on an MOA with the ABA PAs? And how is that education program going right now? I know it's extremely tough, but I know firsthand, like just with my son, but you know, how is that in general going?
Yeah, it's, again, that is, that's a challenge. There won't, I don't believe there's going to be an MOA with the ABA PAs. I think we've been able to work something out. I know Christine has been working diligently with them around, you know, again, getting them involved in a way where there's some support for the kids, you know, in the house. Chris, did you want to jump in?
Sure, I'm pretty excited. I've seen the training portals that have been developed by our BCBAs for the district and our ABA PAs are undergoing the training right now with the ABA teachers and the BCBAs to, we're desperately trying to figure out the technology, both what families have and what we have and our, and our skill levels in being able to provide discreet trial work instruction in the remote environment. And so that's been of utmost importance. So that's been happening both with speech and language and with the ABA PAs and ABA teachers.
Okay, thanks. I know that's an extremely difficult task and, you know, thanks for working on it. I know my son's, you know, out of district, but he's having just issues accessing anything, just even attending to the computers, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Just such a hard, I think, I wrote a letter today. A parent had reached out to me and I was responding to the parent saying, you know, this is the group that we think the most about. We're holding as tenderly as possible. Our most needy is children are definitely, I mean, everybody's impacted by this moment of time being away from the school and the building, but for our students who, you know, are, can't recognize that learning can happen in other forms, are really, really struggling. So our hearts are out there with you as we struggle through this and try to figure out ways to bring our staff into your homes in the ways that make sense for everybody. So thank you for your enduring patience and we are, we are making progress.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Member Ayala? Melissa, do you have anything? Alright, welcome.
Yeah, I've got a question regarding the Business and Finance report we got. In it, I was working at some of the, some of the proposed cuts. I think, I'm pretty sure that's what they are, but instructional support, were they looking at cutting six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Is that correct? Is that?
Daryl, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sorry, I was having a hard time hearing. I believe you asked whether or not it was six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I believe we were looking at four-hundred thousand. You know, off the top of my head, that's the number that, you know, I'm recalling right now. I probably have a tab open up top here, one of the hundred tabs. But, yeah, and again, those are items that we're going to have to look through in terms of talking with all of you about what the proposed cuts might look like. Because again, it's something that we have to work on collectively. We can make our recommendations, but I want to put them out there for all of you so that you can, you can look at the entire process collectively.
Okay, I was, I was just curious when I was looking for it. I'm probably jumping ahead. And I just want to comment on the graduation. I think that's a, it's great what's going to happen. I'm glad that there's more than just doing the online graduation and that's a, it's, it sounds like a great plan. If I were a graduate, I think I'd be happy with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, as we turn to Member Dennis, I think that, you know, I just won't cut into your time, Mike, but if, I think Member Ayala's question is a good one in the fact that we were given a packet, you know, as a collective committee outside of the regular report that outlines some proposed cuts. So I think it'd be good for the committee to be talking a little bit about process, how we're going to talk about it, what was in that packet. I don't know if, Daryl, if you wanted to give a brief overview of what's in that packet? I know Dan just joined the meeting, then we can give Mike his turn.
Yeah, sure. So again, last week when we had our Business and Finance meeting, we did put out two documents. One document was a kind of a spreadsheet that laid out what the The other document was a spreadsheet that showed, not a spreadsheet, but it was a document that showed basically phase cuts. So a phase one and a phase two out of one scenario. And, you know, what we did in phase one was try to really make reductions in places that didn't include people, even though it did include our new people. It was still something that we just put out there. So there were several items within that document that we were, you know, really trying to be careful with, really trying to be thoughtful about before we got to the, to people. We then, you know, the second part of the document included phase two, and phase two was a part where we talked about reductions of about forty-eight people, give or take, and they are across-the-board reductions. Again, you know, Member Dennis talked about the one-twelfth budget. For one-twelfth budget, we are going to be looking at a reduction of four-point-three million dollars. We start talking about some numbers such as we had back in two thousand and eight. It's a little different because the federal government took over some of the money. So yes, the state government lowered the chapter seventy amount, but the federal government put a lot more money into it in terms of the ERA fund. So it was balanced off a little bit more than that. But even at that, I still think more reduction could be the case. And if that were to work, we are really attempting to look at everything possible while still being able to function as a, as a school district. And that's what we put out there. So, you know, we've been tasked with working through this. Director Deedee, myself, building principals, I met with five unions today. Director Carlson and I met with five unions to talk about where we are with FY twenty-one and what might be necessary moving forward. We are going to meet with the rest of the unions to discuss this. discuss this. We're also meeting with the PEC to talk about options associated with what we might be able to do moving forward there. So we have a lot of balls up in the air at this time, but we need to because there are so many unknowns and we have to plan for the worst. I mean, that's what it really comes down to. So those, those are really the, the two items of importance that Dan shared the other evening and, and went through very carefully. Dan, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure thing. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. So just want to bring to people's attention the first document. It's entitled FY twenty-one phased cut scenarios. And look to the left, phase one, and I'll go from left to right. The target date for completion, in a previous business and finance subcommittee meeting, I had prepared a document of deliverables. And the purpose of that document was to identify key actions that would occur in, in the process and the projected date for that activity. The key word is projected. So in terms of this, this work here, I had used May twelfth as a target date for completion. And obviously, that date will, will come and go before any activity is here. What we did was, we, we went through the budget as it currently exists and, and for this work here, we, we made, again, for this work here, proposed reductions. And, and as you can see, the first significant reduction was four hundred thousand dollars in textbooks. Operations and maintenance, we're looking to make a seventy thousand dollar reduction. Pupil services, fifteen hundred dollar reduction. The new positions, that, that figure there, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a combination of the new positions plus, plus the associated health insurance with those positions. Unlike the previous budget that has been approved by the committee back on March ninth, which did not include the use of excess and deficiency, we, we were proposing to use approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of excess and deficiency from the FY nineteen certified value. And just as an FYI, the approximate value that is available, once one adjustment is made, is approximately nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And, and as I said at business and finance the other evening, it's important to note that this issue that we're struggling with for, for twenty-one is not just a one-year issue, but a two-year issue, perhaps maybe longer, maybe three years, hopefully not. But for that reason, as we look at the use of excess and deficiency, need to be mindful that of the approximately nine hundred and sixty-three thousand change available, that we would most likely need that into FY twenty-two as well. We're looking to bring forward, and this is the first time that, that the district has, has considered this, a sum of money from school choice. For the purpose of this work here, we're looking to bring forward approximately hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Circuit breaker, we're looking to bring forward four hundred thousand dollars. And the activity to, to make that happen has already been accomplished. We're looking to make an adjustment across the board in our contracted services of approximately hundred thousand dollars. On the premise that summer school would be run remotely, we'd be looking to reduce the dollars associated with, with staffing by approximately hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that got us, as superintendent noted, to, to the two point three without affecting any, any existing staff. And then, as superintendent noted, looking at the second scenario, the, the total is approximately two point one million would be positions across the board. The total amount between the proposed positions and in the current FTEs, just under fifty-three, fifty-three point oh FTEs at fifty-two point seven five for a total reduction in this first scenario of four point four million dollars. So we're a little bit over what the, the budget increase would be. The second document, I, in essence, and this is, this document here, it's entitled FY twenty-one budget scenario suggested cuts. I essentially took these cuts and plugged them into, into our various appropriations as to show what, what they may reflect. And for the purpose of that work there, I stopped at phase one, which is the, the two point three million dollar reduction. I also noted the other evening that we will have available the stimulus dollars moving forward. And again, the DESI informed us that if we take eighty percent of this year's Title I allocation, approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that we could then estimate what our grant would be. However, just, and as was pointed out last week during business and finance, there is a portion of that grant that needs to be shared with private schools as well. So that's going to reduce the, the value that will be available to the district. And as superintendent noted, this is a multi-year grant and, and can be used for FY twenty if necessary, but certainly for FY twenty-one and also for at least three months of FY twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
And so we'll, we'll, we'll continue to go through our, our list somewhere along lines. I hope that someone will ask, or if not, I'm asking some sort of timeframe about what this administration needs from us and when we would need to be taking actions to facilitate some of these, some of these things, whether it be an early retirement benefit, not, you know, inducements or whatever we can do. You know, what, what I've heard your time for deliverables, what our time for deliverables will be as well. But I'll, I'll let member Dennis have the floor since I took his turn.
Yeah, it's no problem at all. And in fact, I mean, Ken, if you can put that phase cut scenario document back on screen, I think it's worth just pointing out a couple of things there.
The, the second document, as I think Dan alluded to, you know, really builds in a two percent increase over last year, which is, is probably not in, in any realm feasible. So I'm not sure that that's going to bring us much, much value. But the other, the phase cuts, it's, it's worth pointing out a couple of things there. Ken, I think you're on mute.
There we go. Is it for anyone? Good.
This is the one. Thank you. So, you know, if you go right down to the bottom line, the four point four roughly is, is the number that represents the first valve that I referred to before, the one of three valve. When you go back up to the top and you start to go from the top, you know, of the items that are listed under area, and you go all the way down to, you know, using existing E and D. Those first one, two, three, four, five items, or really the first four items, are non-salary reductions to the budget. You know, the fifth were some new positions that we had in. So, you know, so that's another reduction there. But if you go down to E and D and then the carryforwards, the important thing to point out here is that, you know, first of all, those numbers between E and D all the way down to summer school, running remotely, totals about one point two million out of the two point three that's reflected there. Those numbers come into play in the instance that they can be used to offset reductions from, from state aid, which was what I was referring to as that third valve, right? There's no scenario, and again, you know, the administrators, the administration can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no scenario where we can spend above one-twelfth budget. And so, you know, that one point two million of the two point three that's represented here, and, and of that, four hundred and fifty is E and D, is, would be used as offsets to reductions in state aid. It's important to point that out because when we get to the two point one, that number is, is probably a bit understated, just in terms of the four point three reduction in fiscal twenty that we're talking about. The other comment that I'll make on here with respect to E and D, and I think you've heard it from Dan, Dan made a very specific point to state that this is a multi, likely to be a multi-year problem that, that we're about to embark upon. Four hundred and fifty thousand represents about half of our E and D, and that's what's being reflected here. There's two ways to effectualize using this E and D. One is to try to build it into this current budget and then roll other funds over into next year. The other is to reissue the budget with E and D stated. I, I think that we would have some discussion as to whether or not in, in embarking upon a multi-year, well, potential issue, whether we'd want to deplete our E and D, which is already very low by half that amount. So again, some points that, that we've been talking about in, in budget and finance. But this is, you know, this is kind of a leaping board into, again, larger discussions around, and what you had just mentioned, in terms of understanding the timeline and, and when certain decisions need to be taken and, and made. I'll close that out with budget.
Mike, if I just jump in for just a quick second, in terms of the monthly spending, and I, and I did have a conversation today via email with, with the DESI, and there is some flexibility with the spending and, and the key word there is some, you know, just, just for example, if there was a, a balance from the July appropriation, let's just say it's, it's two hundred thousand dollars, that could be brought forward into, into August so that if we, if we had a, a million dollars a month to work with, we now have one point two million. In, in the, in the unlikely event that we didn't spend anything in August, we could bring forward that one point two million and add it to the, the million for, for September. So, you know, we would have that available to us. Obviously, it's unlikely that we're going to have such a big balance sum at the end of the month, but that would give us some flexibility and, and, and some maneuverability in, in terms of how we spend our dollars during, during the summer and into the fall.
Right. So what Dan is referring to, just to, to level set with everyone, is, is that second valve. This is the cash flow valve that I've made reference to earlier. And, and so I think what, what Dan is saying is that as we have with, in, in scenarios where we've been in one-twelfth budget in the past, there have been some scenarios where we might try to buy advance before we enter one-twelfth. There are some scenarios where we try to be judicious, particularly in the summer months with regards to our spending, because we can carry forward a balance. If we didn't spend up to the one-twelfth, we can carry forward that balance in the future months. Of course, the exercise needs to be done, that when we get into October and we have three payrolls, do we start to run into problems even exercising those activities? But the fact remains that the items that are listed on the bottom, those items in and of themselves do now allow us to exceed the one-twelfth budget. The one-twelfth budget is one-twelfth of ninety-seven million dollar budget, less any reductions in, in state resources. So if these numbers, if, if we could use these dollars to backfill any reductions in state resources, but if state resources were whole, we could not add these dollars, even E and D, to one-twelfth of ninety-seven million dollars unless we're taking advantage of a cash flow shortfall from one month to the next. This is all a long way of saying, what does all this mean? This is a whole, long way of saying that this, this line with respect to all positions, two point one million, is probably a bit understated and does not factor in cash flow differences and state resource reductions that we may expect to experience.
All right, Mike, did you have your own questions? I didn't want to make you just be the business and finance reporter.
Well, sure. Actually, I did. And they're not related to the budget directly. They're related to school choice out. I know we have an agenda item for school choice later. I, I don't think school choice out is necessarily related to that. And so I, you know, unless you think it is, Ken, I can hold on to the question.
I think they're completely unrelated.
I think they are too. I did notice in the superintendent's report, there was some information on school choice out that we haven't seen, I haven't seen as a committee member in, in quite some time, and it's, and we've been asking for it. I thought it was interesting that, as it stands today, we, we have eight hundred and fourteen students that school choice out of district. Five hundred and seventy-nine of them are in the high schools, whoever seventy percent are school choicing out at the high school level. And, you know, we were able to see, I think, some of the breakdown between the different places that school, you know, the different places that, that students are school choicing out to. Part of the detail that we've asked for before, and, and I asked for again, and I, I do think that we are collecting it, but I'd like to be able to see it, are what are those numbers looking like over time? How are they trending? Are they trending up or trending down? And, you know, secondarily, why? Why, why are they leaving? We can expect that there's a number of different issues, but, you know, we've asked, I think, a few years ago, and we started to have some conversations around school choice out. And, you know, I think that they, the administration put into place at least a very brief survey instrument that probably has an optional question in this effect. But whatever information that we've collected, it seems to me that this is information that's at the heart of, of what we do as a school district. And understanding how those numbers are trending and, and why is, is a very important information, you know, probably not today, but important information for us to have and, and share as a district. That's all I got.
Okay. So, and just for some of our newer members too, when we talk about school choice, people may choose to go to private schools, but that's not school choice out, right? So school choice out is, is going to another public school through the school choice option. And both of those information, both of those types of information were shared with us in the, in the report. So next item, next person is Steve Godbout. Do you, Steve, do you have anything for us? Steve says no. So Malaya, you're next up. I know, I'll come back.
Oh, wait. Okay, I'm back.
Okay, you're there, you're there. Okay. We can hear you.
I had to switch to my phone because my computer is having issues. So, sorry. Um, okay. So I apologize if I missed any, a couple of things. I was gone for about five minutes early on, but, um, okay, I'm trying to think of what was in the report. Okay. So my first major thing, concern has been touched on, but since I am on the business and finance committee, I feel duty to reiterate it, that I am among those who have sent messages and have been disappointed somewhat with the pace of information that's come back to us, as well as information that was requested even two business and finance meetings ago. I, I know we had discussions about getting the level of even what we're saving or in revenue or costs depending, in, in the current fiscal year, in the line item budget, so we could see the specifics of where those things are, savings are being realized or costs are increasing in the current year as well as looking forward. And that was requested two business and finance meetings ago and not received yet. And I know there's a lot going on, but that level of detail. I also know we, there is some urgency and I, I, about twenty minutes before this meeting, we got a notice of our next upcoming meeting, which is not this week, but the middle of next week. So I know there's probably factors involved in that that I don't know yet. We were, it'll probably be sometime next week. And that was, that was last Wednesday. So I, I have some concerns about the urgency and I'm glad to know that the administrators are working on a plan to share more information more readily. But we've been talking about it for three or four weeks now and not really, we've gotten a lot of information and there are a lot of moving parts, but I'm still concerned as a member of the business and finance committee. We haven't even seen the nice neat breakdown of, again, like I said, exactly where we're seeing savings and where we're not. Like, we see it in trickles as it comes into certain warrants and things. You know, we can see the differences. But even a nice neat list, we could see, are we saving money on transportation? Are we saving money on electricity? I know there's a comment about that, we've, that's come up in our meetings and we have not received that information. So I know there's a lot of pieces we can't see and a lot we don't know, but I am concerned about that. So that is one of my major concerns and hopefully that will change going So that is one of my major concerns and hopefully that will change going forward as, as you have some of the meetings you're having right now and, and maybe gathering some more information.
May I respond to that, Dar?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so just going back to two meetings ago, I, I, I did walk the committee through the various appropriations and what I had projected at that time for ending balances. And in that same packet, I also walked the committee through what I was estimating for, for revenues for the rest of the year. The bottom line is that at that time, and this is subject to change, I projected an ending fund balance of $203,000 for the fiscal year. And that was the latter part of, of April. And there, it, it is in the packet. I'd be happy to, to share that with you later on and, and walk you through that data. We did talk last week about the, the savings, potential savings in, in our bus contract this year. As I, as I had explained to Business and Finance last week, I was still waiting on the, the final numbers from AA Transportation. I didn't want to put the horse before the cart, but the, the numbers I, I think will be very good to helping us now reallocate the costs within the FY '20 budget. I didn't share the number. I was waiting for Ron Earnon White, the president of AA, to sign the contract. And I didn't want to put my foot in my mouth, so to speak, and, and say it's this, but it's not that. And I also shared with the committee last week at, at our meeting that we had begun the process of negotiating a settlement as well with sped transportation providers. So.
I, I know, I, I appreciate all that. As I said, I know there's a lot of moving parts. There's just, maybe it's just in how it's being communicated or not. And, and I understand you guys have a lot going on and I was just reiterating that piece and that there are some things we've asked to see in certain ways and it seems like it's taking a while. But I know there's a lot of moving pieces and I know there's a lot of things like you're having meetings every day that are changing the situation. So I do have that understanding. I just still also have the concern that we have a lot going on and perhaps even Business and Finance isn't being kept up to date as quickly as we could be with everything going on that we're going to have to think about. But that said, I can't change that in this moment, so I appreciate all the efforts you are doing. My other concern or questions, not really concerns about the report, there was, I saw the grant about the water program for changing things to, I can't think what they're called now, sorry, changing the water fountains over. So my question is hypothetically, we don't have the answer to this, but that talked about shared water stations and going forward, is that something we need to look into further revising to have more sinks, for example? We don't know the answer to that yet, but it was a question when I read that. I said, is that useful? Can we use shared water stations if we have the current situation going on or do we need to look further than that? So it's just a hypothetical question.
So, and, and just to interject, so a, a water station, student takes a bottle, put it, puts it under, doesn't touch anything, the water comes right down. So it, it, it's actually much safer than a bubbler where kids are.
Than a bubbler, yes.
Yeah.
All right, that's good to know. That's helpful. Other quick questions I had, I think I'd asked you this. Are there plans to share the building level survey data with us when it is available? Because I think that would be much more useful in terms of what's actually going on because that was a much more detailed survey. And so I was hoping that that would be forthcoming at some point.
It will be.
And there was something in the savings, this might be for Christine, but there was a note in the, the budget situation about summer school savings. And then I know there was a survey that went out to students about the extended school year this summer. So have we definitely decided that those things are remote? Or someone has asked me this, so I'm forwarding that question on. Or is that a hypothetical, we assume they'll be remote?
So as of right now, that's the hypothetical that we assume that will be remote. So Governor today just put out a, a plan of action to open back up. But it is a slow, slow.
Very slow.
And it's all dependent upon the numbers, you know, in terms of the number of new cases and so forth. So it, you know, right now we're working under the concept of remote.
I just wanted to clarify. Someone had asked me, I didn't want to assume. The other question is something I've been asked, but it's not in your report, so I don't know if I should ask, but it has, it's related to other topics we've talked about. The question of picking items up at school. I know you addressed the senior situation or Rihanna did. Do we have a plan for items left at school from other students at the middle schools, for example, on the elementary schools? And also I have heard there are at least a couple of students at a middle school, a middle school in Holden that have string instruments, not band instruments, but string instruments, which is a much smaller group. And there were maybe two of them that I have heard still have instruments at the school and have not been able to get them. So I've had questions about how people can retrieve items in general.
So, you know, if, if it's a string instrument, they should reach directly out to the building principals because they will go get them and bring them to them. So that shouldn't be an issue. The second part around getting kids' stuff out of their lockers and so forth. We're just opening up the schools so that we can get custodians into buildings in a way that's more manageable. You know, once we have a process for that, that'll, that'll open everything up again. We're doing that at the high school. That'll start with the seniors and we'll, we'll trickle down to the rest of the, to the buildings as well. But each school will look a little different, but we'll have consistent methodologies for doing it safely and securely.
All right. Thank you. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, Member Huber.
Hi, Malaya covered a bunch of my questions, so that's good. I did have a couple others though. I was hoping that we were going to see the results of the teacher survey. Is that going to happen?
Yeah, we could definitely put those out. Again, one of the things that we have to do is look at everything a, a little more holistically. And I can tell you, we have a lot, and I said this already, but we have so many balls up in the air right now. And, you know, we're all trying to do 500 things. But we definitely, we want to, you know, go through it carefully and cautiously as well before we just disseminate the information. But there will be stuff from there comes out.
Okay, and I'm hearing from a lot of people and myself included. The emotional well-being question that was on the survey with 51% saying they're somewhat concerned and then 13 and a half percent saying they're extremely concerned. That's, you know, 65% of our population is concerned about their kids' emotional well-being right now. And I haven't seen a plan. So I'm curious what the plan is. Is there one?
So it's, when we think about the, the social emotional well-being associated with what's going on right now. I know Director Keenan has been working closely with the counselors and the school psychologists to open this up. It's a, it's a little more challenging to do this in a way that is how we would typically do it in a, in a classroom. Part of this happens because you don't have the same type of social interactions. Kids are much more isolated. You know, granted, it's, this isn't 30 years ago when kids didn't have access to phones and Facebook and Instagram and those types of things. So they could communicate already. But what, what Brendan is doing is focusing on how we can provide supports for those children who are, you know, in a place that's not fantastic right now. And he and the teachers, the teachers, the counselors are doing that. Brendan, do you want to go through that a little bit?
Yeah, just to echo what Daryl's saying too. I mean, I, I think that's a very natural response also for parents to say, because to say you're not concerned, you know, that doesn't, it could be, you might think about rewarding that question, but I'm sure it is accurate. I mean, we're, there are emotional, I mean, everybody's concerned at, at all levels, not just for kids. And it's extremely stressful time. So that's something we're, we're really looking at how we can, and we're working with counselors and psychologists, how we can leverage their work remotely. And I've been seeing a lot of really good creative ideas coming out of the counselors and psychs too. And also keeping in mind that we, we do have a fairly relatively small staff in that regard, as we've discussed in the past. But as usual, they're stepping up and really doing quite a bit. So just to mention that, absolutely, there's a lot of concern about student emotional well-being and rightfully so.
Thank you, Brendan. And I, I actually had an email from, from a school committee member today just questioning why we even thought about reducing our elementary counselors, you know, taking them off the table before we even, we put them on. And, you know, again, this is, this is probably going to be one of the most challenging things you have to do as a person who supports education is, you know, looking at making reductions to different areas associated with helping kids. This is really, really challenging. So again, we don't have elementary counselors. We have school sites who can assist and very good assistant principals and principals. But, you know, our, you know, we've not had the funds to support those. And that, those positions were, those part-time positions were in the budget, you know, this coming year.
Okay, my only other question goes back to the survey again with 3,000 respondents. And the, the 95% number of people who have access to internet and all of our tools that we've provided is fantastic. But it looks like about 3% still don't have computers or Chromebooks or whatever they need. You know, with that 3,090 kids or families, however that works out, who still need something. So is there a better way that we can reach out and find out who these kids are? I, I understand the survey needed to be anonymous, but it seems like there should be none at this point.
So, you know, I can tell you that, and I don't know whether or not Barry wants to jump in on this, but we're, we're, we're still delivering, you know, at least 15 Chromebooks a week to families who have reached out to us. We have reached out and reached out, you know, on many occasions around sharing, you know, Chromebooks with families. The internet is a little more challenging. Again, you know, the one thing that we can do is offer up the ability for families to drive to the school. And, you know, they log in as a guest, they don't even have to log in, they'll just hook right in. So, you know, we can do that, but Barry, did you want to add anything to that?
Only that we've, we've, there may have been some overlap in the families that requested and received Chromebooks and the ones that answered. My child often doesn't have, so, so the question wasn't really black and white about we need a Chromebook. It was my child often doesn't have access to a computer or Chromebook. And the people I'm thinking who already borrowed Chromebooks may have been answered that way. We definitely have seen a steady decline in the requests. The link is still on the website. The principals all know. The principals have actively reached out to families that they thought I needed this and we've delivered a lot that way. So we're really seeing a slowdown in the requests, so I'm thinking where we've reached the families that really need it.
Yeah, and, and Bob, if you could just respond to that as well.
Yeah, we're at the midpoint in the, the fourth quarter. And part of this was for all teachers to get in touch with their principals and let them know if any student or family has not participated yet. And the principals have received all that information and then their job is to reach out to these families and make a connection and try to determine why it is that they're not. So Barry's right, we've been reaching out more and there are less requests. There might be an uptick as we just sort of try to tackle these last few folks who aren't able to participate.
And, and just to, you know, continue with that, as we look at the fall, which I know people are still focusing on, how do we end the year? How do we get stuff out of lockers? We're, we're thinking, okay, how are we going to bring kids back into a school in September with social distancing, with, you know, maybe different schedules, with all of those types of things. But one thing I do know is that every child's going to have to have access to a Chromebook through the district. And, you know, I, I know that's something that Member Haines has been, you know, really emphasizing in terms of speaking with me about this. And just trying to figure out ways to help us out as best you can. So that's been extremely helpful on, on that side of it. And, you know, ultimately it's something that, you know, we're going to have to do. We don't have a choice. And we just have to make sure that we do it in a way where families know how to use the technology, they have access to it, and it's really consistent.
That's a good segue to, to Member Haines.
I've always wanted to say this, longtime listener, first time caller. So I thank you everyone for what you're doing. I, I, I appreciate all the work I have hounded as respectfully and, and time sensitively as I possibly could, people in the administration. Thank you for that and thank you for your help very much. And actually, thank you to the teachers who, as the survey shows, are, are doing a good job. And I, and I, and I'm very, I was really happy to see some of the good returns on that, as I'm sure everybody was. So I have a couple, couple of questions. And I, and Rihanna, by the way, great job. Fantastic work you're doing. We will miss you. And you always bring up a point that I, that I, that builds or basically makes much clearer in my mind that I had. And you talked about drilling down specifically to schools in terms of, you know, workloads. And the general thing I'm hearing is that at the high school level, people are kind of getting swamped. And, and I, this is general, very general broad brush stuff, stuff here, but high school people are really getting, you know, struggling. And then in some of the lower grades, as you go down, it seems like the workload gets lighter and lighter and lighter and lighter. And to the point where some of the, you know, K to five range, some of those students, the moms and dads feel like, hey, you know, what's, what's going on? This is basically a protracted recess. So I, I, I do feel like, I do feel like some of the school specific information will be very, very useful. To the, to the point of the very youngest kids. Daryl, I, we talked before and I just wanted to know if you had any update or has there any been any progress at all if using the local cable access channels as it means for some of the youngest kids? Maybe it's maybe for relief for moms and dads who are having trouble with providing, you know, access on the computer and getting them logged in. Any, any help with that at all?
You know, it's interesting, Jeff, you know, one of the things that, you know, I talked about with our staff late last week was some of the current kind of online tutorials that kind of go out there. And, you know, we're looking at some of those, I mean, because they're already out there in many different kind of venues and in many different places, so I don't want to recreate the wheel. But it's something that we're, we're, you know, we've kind of looked at. You know, Barry is going through, you know, working with some of the principals around how we can make it a little more doable for people in terms of providing some tutelage around, you know, Google Meet or Google Classroom or, you know, how to, how to access Drive, those types of things.
Okay, okay. And the, and, and I basically kind of related to this. When I was, I was looking through the guidance that DESI had put out, I guess it was last week. The number one thing, I mean, the number one thing, top priority, number one, was having kids interact with, not only with the teachers, which of course is critical, but also with each other. There was an emphasis on, you know, that the peer-to-peer element as well. And obviously that ties into all the conversations we've had about Chromebooks and whatnot. But one thing that occurred to me was, Ken, you had mentioned early on, looking forward next year to curriculum. And, and I know this committee previously has had conversations about a, a, a more unified curriculum across the towns so that what we learn in Rutland is the same as Holden, this is the same as Sterling, et cetera. And what I'm thinking, you know, is this, we have situations and it's totally understandable where there's a teacher or two or three or four who, because of younger kids, because of family dynamics, it's very hard for them to get online and interact with the class. My thought is, is that across this entire district, certainly somewhere in the five towns, there is a teacher or two in every grade that could be, that could access online meeting or, or could interact with kids online. And I'm wondering, as this plan from DESI points out, I mean, I'm just basically reading off of what DESI put out. But DESI specifically talks about collaboration. Having, as it says, in a larger school, one content area teacher could be responsible for planning curriculum and recording remote lessons. Other content area teachers could take responsibility for following it with students in small groups. Certainly across our five towns, we have an abundance of, of people who could, you know, who could help out with that. And using that, we have a much better chance, I would, I would think, of being able to have more of an online presence, more interaction with the kids, not to mention kids with each other. And I just wonder if that's something that has been looked at, if that is a consideration for the curriculum going forward. If it hasn't been, is that something that could? If it hasn't been, is that something that could be looked at? You know, especially heading into what we are next year. And keeping with my joke, I will take my answer off the air. Thank you.
All right, Member Ember. Are you there? And we'll come back to Member Ember. Member Christian Bob?
Hi, thank you very much for giving me some time to, to ask a few questions. And first of all, regarding, in the report, you mentioned, Daryl, that the food service has been continuing to do a phenomenal job of getting about 100 students serviced with our food. I'm wondering, and, and this is a question you may not have right now, but I'm just wondering if there is a plan or if there is a mechanism in place in which we can help students and families bridge any gap that might be happening as we wind down school for the summer. Clearly there's going to be greater need this summer than there has been in the past. And I'm just wondering if the food service can offer, if not food, because I realize that there might be some limitations with that, but at least access to, to resources. If there's a way that we can bridge that gap by directing families in need to resources that may not have accessed before, just because there's a greater need with, with the economy and so forth. So I just wanted to put that out there, not necessarily to get your feedback on that right at this particular moment, but just to put a bug in your ear on that. Secondly, I'd like to, I'd like to highlight the recognitions that you put in the report about the Math Space Challenge winners. I think you mentioned 100 students and, and the teacher, Mrs. McCluskey, and also the National, the Science National Honor Society recipients of their recognition. And also to the, the high school seniors that we have. This group of students, in my estimation, are, are quite remarkable. They embody the kind of perseverance to succeed through economic hardships. If you recall, they were born around the time of 9/11 or shortly thereafter. They were students through the Great Recession and the economic downturn that we had there. We have tried to rebound our education system during their tenure here in the school system. And now they're graduating again, facing a future of uncertainty through the lens of this pandemic. They are a generation that has seen challenges and skills, challenges that, that none of us dealt with in our, in our time as students, I can imagine. They are the generation in which these skills and knowledge, knowledge in science is really going to hopefully help us get, get, get us out of this mess. So I just think that they, they are the future. They are, not to sound cliche, but they are. And their recognitions, their perseverance through all of this is, is remarkable. And so I appreciate you mentioning them in, in your report. Finally, I just want to, you know, I, I realize that budgetarily we are entering into, you know, conditions in which we have never, I have not seen before having, you know, not been serving as a committee member during the last recession. But I just want to remind, just make some things that I note out there. I want to put it out there for the record that we have, as you put in the report, there's 80 classes that we currently exceed our school policy on class sizes. We are in need of, of 25 additional staff to just meet those policy requirements. And I know that we're not going to come close. We weren't going to come close this year in, in achieving that to begin with. And now we're even further back behind the eight ball with the economic downturn of this pandemic. You know, not only are we not going to see new staff with this potential cutbacks, but some of that staff, some of those staff members were going to be one support nurse, which I find to be extremely troubling, you know, in a time of pandemic and, and health concerns where we're going to spread our nursing staff even more thin than we had. And, and we're still going to not be able to provide relief to this, the teachers at Mountview, which have been taking on the burden of additional classes to reduce their class sizes for many, many years. So these are still concerns to me and I know that we are all, I'm preaching the choir here. I just want to make that perfectly clear, that what we are losing out on during this time of our pandemic and our economic downturn. It's just, it's, it's troubling, of course, to all of us. The impacts that we will see on, on student learning, you know, is, is, is going to be unprecedented as well. And I, I think that, that that's, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that we're going to have to do this, make these hard, hard decisions. You know, and I, I would like also, just in closing, just one more comment. And, and that is about synchronous learning, how important it is to have FaceTime with those, students having FaceTime with those teachers, you know, some of which they see more than they see their parents at home on a given school day. So they have bonds with these teachers that right now they're not able to get. And without synchronous learning and an opportunity for regular FaceTime opportunities, you know, they're, they're missing out on those connections. And so I, I just wanted to echo what Member Haines had said about that. And I, I just think that's super important as we look forward to finishing out our year in this, in this remote learning environment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just to back up the list, Member Haines had asked, could Daryl answer his question? When I heard the take it off air, I assumed you were going to respond to that offline. But was there anything you wanted to respond to from, from Member Haines's question, Daryl?
You know what, it's definitely something that we are, we could conceivably look at. It's, you know, again, we've, we've had some emails that have gone back and forth. And, you know, I appreciate what Member Haines has kind of put out there. You know, one of the things that we have to think about is, again, pulling people together consistently. And it's, sometimes this is an easier venue in which to do it, a platform, because you can communicate with another school remotely. So it makes it a little easier. But we're still, you know, looking at just getting people used to kind of this entire process. So we will be looking at some of the different options. All the options, again, though, have to be, you know, really vetted and reviewed in terms of making sure that we have staff who can do it adequately. You know, the, the resources that we make available are, are solid resources. And, you know, how we, how we provide support for the staff, but also for the kids based on that. But it, it's something that we can look at.
Hey, sorry, I got, I lost there for a second. Remember the member Lavoy?
Yeah, so first I just wanted to thank administration and the IT support for getting the survey out and, and reaching, you know, 3,000 folks. And, and also getting a pretty positive result on, on that survey. I too look forward to information having to do with what faculty are seeing. And I'm hoping that'll come up at, at the next Ed sub meeting. And the only other two issues that, that really I was going to mention Laura touched on. The first is kudos to the folks over Thomas Prince and Ms. McCluskey and the, the students there who placed first nationwide in the, the US 30-day growth challenge. That's pretty remarkable. And, and particularly impressive with, with all that's going on. And then the second issue has come up sort of tangentially in a lot of our conversations, including, you know, the, the cuts that we're talking about. And, and that is that we, you know, I think we're still awaiting, and I, you know, clearly lots, lots is going on, but, but also we've spent a long time awaiting a staffing plan. And, and yes, we're going to go to town meetings and we're going to be talking about the fact that the, that they're going to be tough meetings anyways. But the towns still need to know that there's a five or seven-year plan that needs to occur. And, and the actions we're taking in this year make that situation even worse. And, you know, it's, it's unclear just how bad that will be. But we still need that document, even if it goes out seven years. And even if we know that we're not going to realize any parts of it this year because of the, the current circumstances. You know, I, I'm just hoping we get that, that plan much sooner rather than later. And I just think it's way late in coming.
So Bob, I can tell you, you know, again, I'm, I'm going to push back a little bit on this because of, you know, the issues associated with what we're looking at for kind of a plan. And we talked about this a couple of months ago, right before, and we would have had it, I hear you. And I think you, Bob, and I actually went through and kind of looked at what the process would be. Unfortunately, this all kind of kicked in. I think what, what we can do is have a, a plan of action that lays it out. It's not something that's going to happen immediately. I do think it's something that towns need to be aware of. I also know this is probably going to blow it up in terms of what the timing looks like. In the same way, this is going to affect our tech, not, you know, our, our textbook plan, you know, moving forward. So there are a lot of different moving parts right now that we're attempting to deal with, you know, as, as, and manages best we can. But I hear what you're saying with that.
Right. And I, you know, and I get all that. And I think, you know, probably the school committee in general would, would agree with all of that. We, we understand that, that that's not going to occur, but it's still useful to have the plan and, and puts into our contrast our situation when we do speak with member towns. And it still gives us a direction to be going and, and be, even when we're thinking about cuts, having that, let's say, seven-year plan still gives us, you know, priorities which are important to have. So thanks.
Member Lavoy?
All right. I want to echo a few things that Member Christian Bob, or Member Haines had. One being specifically around healthcare cuts and, and nursing cuts. I think it's important in this time to think about a path forward and, and what that may mean in terms of a future state of treatment, et cetera. And knowing that having healthcare professionals at our schools might be not only a vital part of kids attending school, but just keeping schools open when that, when that situation hits. The other thing that I want to talk about is the comments about the survey and the emotional well-being. And we're probably all familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And I'm going to keep going back to that because when you look at hierarchy of needs, there's probably questions whether or not a large percentage of people's basic needs are being met today. Whether that is safety, whether that is security at home. And then the next level are psychological needs. And a lot of that comes from social interaction. And kids are not getting that today. And then self-fulfillment is, it's, it's not going to be obtainable without building on those, those other needs. So I think it's important that when we think about remote learning and we think about conversations today, even about summer school being done potentially remotely, how big is that gap widening for the kids that are in those need groups versus other kids? It's nice to say, we're going to give every kid access to a Chromebook, but it's evident, it's apparent to me. Member Young stated this, that there are kids that cannot access school via a Chromebook or through that. So it's great that parents can go to a parking lot and access wireless, but you think about a gradual opening and why couldn't kids that need the physicality of school be thought of as a way of engaging in a summer or extended year program in some sort of physical proximity to a teacher or to an aide, to be able to help not widen that gap? So I think we need to think about those things. And the last point or comment I'm going to make is I was surprised to hear a member say that a survey went out to parents or provider or people about extended school year. I have not seen a survey. That was the first I've actually heard of that. So I don't know if a survey did go out from the district, district on that. But if so, I would definitely want to hear from administration on who that went out to and when that went out to and what the basis was.
Chris, can you respond to that?
Certainly. The survey went out last Thursday or Friday. And my administrative assistant sent it out using the names and emails of students that had been referred to E S Y. I did hear from just a few parents that said they didn't, that they had seen out on CPAC on Facebook that a survey had gone out and they hadn't gotten anything and we were able to rectify that. So if, if anybody hearing this school committee message hasn't gotten that survey, please give me an email or my assistant, Randy Jacobs, and we will definitely get one out to you. Thank you, Mr. Lavoy, for bringing that to my attention. We'll definitely get one out to you.
Well, I'd like to follow up with that because it's not up to the district to recommend people. It's part of people's I E P plan that calls for a full school year. So I'm a little concerned now. You used a list on recommendation versus what the law dictates.
It's a recommendation that's made in an I E P session. Parents.
So there are I E Ps right now that are, that do have extended school year and people that have not received.
Yes, I understand what you're saying and there must have been some kind of technology error. We have gotten back over 105 responses at this point out of the 275 students that attend summers.
Well, you're talking to somebody right here who hasn't received a survey and it's in my daughter's I E P. So you're, you're, that concerns me that you're making decisions. I've asked for an I E P meeting. You haven't given an I E P meeting. So I'm a little concerned as what's going on and you're calling it a technology glitch.
So again, thank you for bringing it to my attention and, and I'm sorry that it's becoming so personal, but I will review those protocols and make sure that one is sent out.
And if I, if I can just chime in on the other part, when you were talking about some, you know, the whole concept of synchronous versus asynchronous, that was something that, you know, was brought to my attention by a member in a very nice email that was forwarded to me this weekend. And I, I do think that that's another model, Matt, that is going to be necessary. So the concept of bringing kids in, you know, it's all stuff that we're going to have to look at. And I, I agree. I think that's super important because we, we need them to feel comfortable. We need them to have those connections. And you're exactly right. That does, that is what it comes down to. But I also want to look at how the synchronous learning and the synchronous activities can, can take place in a way that's supportive of kids' needs, you know, their, their social needs as well.
I'm very disappointed though to hear that it went out on, on a kids that were recommended versus following the law and then using technology as an excuse. That really bothers me because you guys have filings of everybody's I E P. You know exactly what people are entitled to. And that bothers me from an administrative perspective all the way down.
Member? Remember Longo Lill?
Yes, thank you, Ken. I have, I think, three questions. First, I want to thank the administration for all the hard work you're doing under the most difficult of circumstances. And I want to give a shout out to our two student representatives. Thank you both. You both raised good, very good issues and we very much appreciate your input. As another member said, you've raised things that we wouldn't have thought of. So it's great to have you there to do that. So at last week's Business and Finance Subcommittee meeting, I raised the question of whether our bus company is applying for any of the Paycheck Protection Program funds. And I was told that so far they have not done that because the process is cumbersome and problematic. And I just, I wondered if there's any change in that in the last. Um, and I just, I wondered if there's any change in that in the last, um, few, at least the last few days since, since that meeting. I wonder if Mr. Didi can update us or, or Superintendent McCall?
Um, I, I will, um, to my knowledge, no, um, there, there's no change, uh, since last week.
Okay. Well, just for the record, you know, as I stated at that meeting, unless there's some very compelling reason, um, more than just the process being cumbersome and problematic, whatever that means, um, that the bus company's not applying for that kind of money, then I, I think it, it should come out of the bus company's bottom line, not our bottom line. I think that that's, that's, it's not fair to shift those costs to us if there's, if there's money out there on the table, um, that could be obtained. Uh, that's a real concern to me. So that's my, the financial issue that I wanted to raise.
And Linda, if I, if I, Linda, I apologize. And if I may, just to bring it back into context with a larger group, when we were talking about that last week, uh, uh, those were the words that I used when I was sharing with the committee, um, some of the conversations that I was having with, uh, with the bus company, AA Transportation relative to the amended agreement, uh, that, that we were looking to do. And, and as part of those discussions, uh, um, one of the questions that I had asked or my colleague had asked, uh, you know, was the, the federal stipend dollars? And, and, uh, the, the owner of the company said, well, that, that's, it's cumbersome. And I think that was his exact term. So that's, that's the genesis, uh, to that word and to those words. And, and I, I shared that with business and finance when we were talking about the potential savings for the, uh, the bus contract, homeschool bus contract.
Right, yes, yes. Well, you know, if, if there's any technical assistance we can provide him in, in dealing with the cumbersome process, I'm all for, uh, doing that. But again, um, I don't think money should be left on the table, um, and then requested to come out of our bottom line. So I hope that, uh, that efforts can be made to persuade him to pursue that if it's, if it's, um, if it would be helpful to his bottom line and, and therefore ours. So, um, on, on the issue of remote learning, I agree with member, um, Kirshenbaum and the other member who, who talked about the importance of having some actual face-to-face conversations between students and teachers, albeit online. I know my ninth grade son has only one teacher, the French teacher, who's currently holding actual face-to-face conversations. And it seems to motivate him. He seems to be a little excited about it when it happens. I actually don't have to drag him out of bed to participate in the 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. phone call. And I, it only happens once a week, but that's fine. Um, and I think even, I think if other teachers could do that even once a week with each class, I think that that would really help, um, students feel more of a connection to school. And, um, I also think it might be, uh, have beneficial, uh, for their, uh, social emotional health. Uh, I wondered if, if Mr. Keenan had any, any thoughts about that?
Well, thanks, Linda. I absolutely agree that there's nothing like face-to-face and we're doing the best we can to replicate what happens in school or missing it, certainly. But, uh, what you mentioned about your son's experiences is definitely one experienced by, uh, I'm sure students all over the country. So, um, you know, I can't speak to the remote learning aspect of that. I know that there have, the outreach that the counselors and psychs are doing, uh, they're, they're trying as much as possible to have that face-to-face and give students advice on that. And, you know, just having that check-in, like you said, even once a week, uh, it, it does, um, does help students feel more connected to school, even though they're not coming in.
Yes, exactly. And so if there's a way to encourage teachers to do that, I realize we can't mandate it, um, but if we could encourage them to do that, I think, I think that would be really beneficial for students. Um, so, but the last question I had was I, there's understandably been a huge focus on, um, the high school graduation this year. But I wondered if there's been any, if you've had a moment even to think about, uh, middle school graduation? Because that's also, you know, meaningful to kids, um, not, not as significant, of course, as high school graduation. But, um, have you had even a moment to think about that or is that sort of, are you getting through, um, what, what you need to do in terms of high school graduation, et cetera, first? And then you'll get, you'll figure that out? Any thoughts?
Yeah, so we've actually spoken with middle school principals about this. Um, you know, we talked to them about this a couple of weeks ago. Um, you know, whatever we do, it's going to be, um, something that's done virtually, uh, you know, in the same way. It's, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that, um, you know, again, we're trying to do something consistent so that one eighth grade doesn't do something that looks very different from another eighth grade. So, um, you know, the, the middle school principals, two K principals have met. And what we're going to do is, uh, you know, again, you're right, high school is the big, the big one we're, we're dealing with right now. And, um, and we'll have more details around what's going to happen with eighth grade, uh, as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then in closing, I just want to echo what, uh, member Kirshenbaum said and other members have said about the concerns about the nursing cuts. Um, that's, that's a real, a real concern and, and a problem. Um, and, um, just to keep that on, on everyone's minds, on everyone's plate, um, as we go forward and, and look for opportunities where perhaps we could restore that. Thank you. That's, those are my questions.
So we'll continue down our list. Your reminder is 8:37. We have a long agenda ahead of us. So, um, member Mitchellowski?
Yeah, thank you. I, um, have a lot of questions and thoughts about remote learning and the survey and all of that, but as Ken had said earlier, I feel like those things come later. Uh, one question that I feel like Daryl or Bob could answer in email is I would like us to know what percent of our students are not participating in their education right now? I don't know. Bob had said that the principals were tracking that. If that could come in our next update so that we just have a sense that the kids we're not reaching, that would be helpful. Um, I have a lot of questions just about the budget and the next step and the plan. And I think, um, thoughts are I have concerns about decimating E and D this year at this time. I think that I understand the trade-off between saving positions and using funds, but I'm not sure if we need to consider as a committee, taking a more measured approach to that cut so that we can have funds available for FY21 or use. I just feeling like using 50% of it, that was a suggestion, I think, in some of the documentation we had, if I didn't misread it, feels like a bit of a far stretch. Um, I watched the business and finance subcommittee meeting and it seemed as if after a blackout for recertification, those funds become reavailable, right Dan? Did I misunderstand that? So we would have access to them in FY21 if needed, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry, I missed that. Could you say that again, please?
Well, E and D, we-
Yep.
My concern is that I would like us as a committee to think through is using so much of it. 50% of it is the recommendation that was going to require action by the school committee at some point if I read the paper and then listened, my meeting, listening was correct.
That's correct. So if, so I'm sorry, if we were to use, um, a, a, that $450,000, the committee would need to take an action-
Right.
By June 30th.
Yes. My question though is if you don't take action on the full 450 by June 30th and say use 250, um, after a period of recertification, it's not that that money goes away, right? We still have access to that funds later in fiscal year 21 as needed for cash flow purposes or something like that? And I, can you clarify that?
So the, so the money doesn't disappear, but we lose the ability, we lose the ability to access that money for fiscal year 21 if we do not take any action prior to June 30 of 2020. If, if we were to access those dollars in 21 upon recertification and that, that would be, for example, let's say it's next December or January that FY20 gets recertified, I'm sorry, that FY20 gets certified, we would need to go through the same process next fiscal year that we used a year ago when we looked to, to take $250,000, um, out of E and D for the turf field. Uh, we would need to give the towns 45-day notice, um, that, uh, the committee was looking to take a sum of money, um, let's say it's 200,000, um, for the FY21 budget and the towns with them would have 45 days to say, yeah, your name.
Okay. So that's helpful. I think it, it might be helpful, even if we could just get a pointer to use of the E and D or something. I, I think I have to read that a couple more times to really understand it because I'm not, there's something that's not quite clicking, but that's, that was one question. The other couple of questions I have are, have we considered, um, discussions with, or what's the process by which, and this might be a Ken question, by which we, um, consider opening conversations about like, you know, deferring, uh, salary increases or looking at, um, increased fee structure for participation and fees or things like that in order to be, um, more creative about how we're expending our money and giving us a little bit of breathing room until the state budget is more finalized and we have more concrete numbers that we can move along with.
I think there are a couple of different-
The big hit is like the contractual obligation, right, for salary? And that's such a big nut that we have of our budget, right? And that's going to hit us hard right in the fall with pay periods, correct?
Yeah, so there, there's a couple of different things you said there. One is about contracts. Management is meeting tomorrow, partially an executive session to, to talk about process for, for those conversations. The superintendent mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that he had conversations with five unions, five collective bargaining units today about that, something we would have to proceed on. If there's other things that are not contract related, like fee structures, even if we have to bring that to school committee for, for a vote. If there's other creative things, like say some incentive for, if say 10 people plan to retire at the end of next year, if there was some way we could grease the skids with some money, again, that would involve conversations with the units, but the, the superintendent would have to bring that to us, um, for, for conversation. You know, if we were to have to lay people off, that's going to cost us, you know, the whole three for two we talked about many times in the past. If people could be induced to retire early, um, you know, we would save money, uh, that way. Those sort of creative things the superintendent would have to bring to us, that also would have to be discussed with unions though, um, those, those sort of negotiations. So things we can do internally or smaller nuts, as you say, like fee structures can come directly from the administration for a vote. Things that are collective bargaining have to be, you know, collectively bargained.
Right.
Um, and that's something that management will take up tomorrow and figure out how to process that out to legal and hopefully we can move on that, um, that quickly.
Okay. And so the other, the other things that you mentioned, Ken, um, you know, more creative things or more specific, uh, staffing plans for us to consider as a committee regarding cuts. What, Daryl, what is the timeline by which we can expect those? I just feel like the, you know, we are at May 11th and I understand and appreciate the complexity of the situation and, um, but I'm, you know, feeling a bit, uh, like time is short for us to make some of these decisions.
Yeah, it is. So again, Amy, I'm having a little bit of a problem hearing you. You're, you're, it's a little bit kind of, what was the first part of that question?
Uh, when can we expect these things? More concrete recommendations from administration around cuts or, I mean, because I see the numbers, right? So you're recommending cuts in lines, but it's very hard for us to understand what that actually looks and feels like within the district. So when can we expect a more concrete plan?
So that aligns with what you, that kind of aligns with the other question that you talked about in terms of looking at, uh, defrayed costs associated with some of the union contracts. And again, that's something that we'll have a conversation about. So they actually go hand in hand. Um, you know, we can come up with, uh, a list and one of the things that we have done is we've, uh, reached out to, you know, principals. Principals are looking at, um, you know, different options associated with savings, uh, associated with staff and their buildings, uh, right now. So, um, at the next meeting, we'll have something that has more concrete information. But again, it, there are many different items that are going to be tied back together because it's easy to come up to say, okay, we need $2.7 million worth of staff. We just kind of listed. The issue is going to be ultimately having the discussion with all of you around, okay, what are the priorities associated with, um, you know, what we want to do and move forward with and how can we be creative, uh, around some of these different things that we're talking about? Again, you know, what typically happens in this type of situation is athletics might get thrown on the table. Um, you know, charging for transportation, you know, um, for, um, you know, people that live with, you know, outside of the, the, the mileage. So those are all things that, you know, in a typical year, we'd say, okay, let's work on this, let's roll it out a little bit. We have a little bit of time. Everything is compressed. So we're, we're, we're looking at what we can do. In terms of the staffing, I think we can give you something at the next meeting that will be more concrete, um, but it'll be tied back to a pretty large number.
Yeah. And I guess, so I guess my, my concern would be to make sure that we as a larger committee, I mean, I appreciated having the recording of the business finance subcommittee meeting so I could at least listen to it and get a little context before. But I think that if we can have it, I feel like that is more than a one-meeting conversation to lay options on the table and then try to think through them as a committee, um, especially a committee this large remotely. Um, so as early as we can get any information would be helpful. Um, and I just last thing, wanted to support Linda's, um, perspective and I, not having the benefit any of us have of having inside the conversation, I do think it's unfortunate that part of a settlement agreement with the transportation company wasn't contingent upon them applying for federal funds that were available to them. Because it's, I, I know we're paying them a reduced rate of what we should have had they serviced us, but we haven't been getting service. And I want to support the company to keep them in business. I understand the complexity of limited areas where we can get service or companies that will do that type of servicing. But I, I think it's, it was a miss if the group at large didn't, um, require some sort of at least attempt to procure federal funding to offset what the cost to the district would be. So. That is it. Thank you.
All right. And, and just to emphasize to, to remember, Mr. Lowski is saying like we, some of these decisions seem to be made very soon in terms of deadlines we, that the administration has for decisions about, you know, reductions in staff or for non-professional staff, those deadlines come up in, in June. Member Mitchell, are you there?
I am, but for the sake of time, I'll pass my turn.
You're a good man, Charlie Brown. Um, member Atmar?
All right. Just, um, I mean, just a couple of things, just, and it's really just kind of reiterating some of the things that's already been said, especially, uh, by a lot of my colleagues here. Um, really the things that, I mean, really that what I'm keyed into are really when we talk about planning for the worst. And I don't think that we have, um, really pushed forward with coming up with these plans for the worst. And I get it because the worst is pretty bad. We really, there's a reality out there that we really don't want to take a look at. And so, uh, Director Didi had worked up kind of scenarios to get us just down to a 1/12 budget, which, I mean, probably for most years, 1/12, tough step, but it's a recent, it's like a good ballpark starting point. But really, I mean, especially to, I mean, to add on to what member Dennis said, if we're going to talk like planning for the worst budget-wise, we probably want to be planning for something where everyone's back in school in the fall, but our transportation costs are off the roof because we're shuttling kids here, there and everywhere on one quarter full buses while at the same time, the state has taken $6 million out of how much we would normally get. And so what kind of plan would we have to cover a $7 million delta that we don't have right now? Are we going to purely look at more cuts, which would get us using, uh, the 46,000, 246 number that Director Didi had, um, doing back of the envelope calculations, actually literally on the back of an envelope, engineers and all that? I mean, we're looking at on top of the 45 that he'd already listed. I mean, we're looking at cutting maybe another 140 from the district, maybe having to cut one-fifth of our personnel just to get that $7 million gap? Or are we going to go another route and say, we're going to have to put this to the towns as an override to try and help us cover this delta? Again, hard, hard decision to try and be made, but really if we're going to plan for the worst, we need, that's kind of probably the worst that we have to have a plan for because if, if we kind of sit around and say, oh, we're going to wait for the state, wait for the state, if we start by going with 1/12 and then the state says, yeah, we're not giving you anymore, you're getting your, this $6 million cut is what you're going to have to live with, um, then we're really going to be in a bind down the road if we don't have something to plan for it. So, um, again, we, it's already been discussed, the hour is getting late, literally and figuratively, and, um, that's, I think, really kind of the plan, what we, what we need to be able to see. But then the second part of it, talking about planning for the worst as well, that was the budget side of it. The other really planning for the worst is what if we don't have a vaccine for another 18 months? What if we're trying to do remote learning until 2021? What, that's the worst if we're talking about really the well-being of our students, um, our students- the well-being of our students, our students' academic progress. Remote learning, doing the best that we can. Everyone's doing the best that we can. But it's, it's kind of like doing the best that we can to get us over to the finish line for the school year. If we're starting 2020, the 2020, '21 school year, six months, or first half of the year's remote learning, not decisions being made now, but again, if we're kind of talking worst-case scenario for what that could look like for our students, for our children, that's something we're going to have to, we'll need to have a, figure out how we're going to work around that. Because my, my middle child, she's going to be starting kindergarten in the fall, and how would you do remote learning kindergarten for the first half of the academic year? Like, I don't even, like, I can't even imagine what that'd be like for kindergarten. But, and then, especially, and especially more at the elementary level, I mean, what's that going to look like for my, my daughter, who's my older daughter, who's a first grader, going to be in second grade? She hasn't really seen her teacher other than the daily Zoom calls, but now she's going to have a new teacher in the fall and trying to figure, trying to navigate what that's like as a second grader or someone one year younger as a first grader? What's that's going to look like for, if they have to do that for into 2021? Is it, is it better to have them stay with the same teacher and try and do some kind of looping with that? That's not an, like, that's not an answer for right now, but that's something that's going to get, I get it, we're, the budget's like right in our face. But these kinds of questions, I think, are going to catch up on us very quickly. And I'm hoping that we can still have some foresight to kind of be looking ahead to trying to get an understanding of what the experts really say in terms of, if we have to do this remote learning for a prolonged period of time in the start of a new school year, what's going to be the best thing that we can do for the students in our district? So, just the, the two things that I worry about most, money and then remote learning, and they're kind of actually different pieces, because the most expensive one actually has us in the buildings where we're getting face-to-face, but kind of the distribution and dispersing of students, less, a little bit less of a budget pinch, still a pinch, but a little bit less if we're doing purely remote learning. But the challenges to our students as well. So, just two things that I'm concerned about. I don't really need an answer for that, but I'm, I just wanted to reiterate the, kind of the concerns with those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, if I can just jump in real quick.
Real quick, okay.
The AST, American Federation of Teachers, actually has put out an excellent kind of overview of transitioning back into schools, because remember, we're not going to transition back into schools for schools down in the south and out west. You know, they go back to school early August, you know, sometimes even late July. So, it's going to, they're going to kind of be the guinea pigs for us in terms of how things look. So, they're putting out a lot of information in terms of what that might look like, you know, but I hear what Carl's saying. And, you know, I do have a health group that's getting together that Brendan is going to be running, and he's going to be pulling together people from the health community, our nurses, some teachers, some administrators, to look at how we can transition students back into any type of setting, whether or not it be a part-time, full-time, online.
All right, thank you. Member Silva? All right, we'll, we'll come back to Askema if she has a question. Member Smith? Christine, are you there? Actually, don't think Member Smith is on the line. Member Weeks?
I'll try to be as brief as I can. I want to actually thank all my colleagues as well. I thought the committee members really offered really insightful questions today. All my budget questions were already answered. So, just a quick question. I was hoping to get a little feedback on what happened today during the teacher training session.
So, teachers did a couple of different things. There was a focus around, you know, really looking at the gaps between what we're looking at for, you know, the end-of-the-year work that the kids are doing and where they would typically be. And, you know, again, as we kind of leave this, you know, FY20 and move into FY21, we're going to be looking at what the, you know, where they're actually going to have to start and what type of compression will have to take place while we also try to get, you know, the rest of next year in, in terms of the curriculum. A lot of this work, there will be some feedback or guidance. And I know I do say this because Desi does say that they will provide guidance on many things. It just always isn't as timely as we would like. So, much of what we're trying to do is, you know, really tie things back together in terms of giving people the opportunity to say, okay, here's where we're at. This is how much we've gone through. This is what we're doing. Here, here are ways in which we're going to have to move forward. And what will it look like ultimately next year?
Awesome. So, thank you so much for that. And I didn't want to respond in a positive way. It's sad to see that some of the high school students are not getting the face-to-face time. That is so important for the kind of social as well as, like, academic conversations. But from my perspective, on the elementary level, it's been fantastic. It's really a lifesaver. It's really a model, especially in the third grade at TPS, that I hope others can look at. Zooms three times a week, sometimes a whole class, sometimes by alphabet, so it's a smaller session, and sometimes the two third grades put together. So, it really allows the teacher to have like a funner, you know, lighter session when both third grade classes are together, a more private academic session with only a partial bit of the alphabet, and just kind of an overview of the week with just her class. So, I've just been amazed by how well they've put that together. And my last question for the administration kind of goes back to the Desi guidance that came out last week, specifically regarding grading and how you've kind of communicated that message to principals and how they're communicating it to students. Because I know it's a stressor, especially at the middle and high school level. Desi was very, very clear that they encourage students to be matriculated up to the next grade level and action-supported by research. But I know it's a headache because they didn't give much guidance on what does a quarter four passing mean when you're averaging quarters together on the high school level? And I know that's a super-stressor for the kids, the parents, and the teachers.
So, it was interesting. I had a parent actually send an email to me after Boston Public Schools made the decision to just move.
Everybody.
Yeah, move all students forward. We're, you know, we're, we're looking at this in a, in a similar vein. You know, ultimately, we don't want to put kids in a situation where, you know, they would be retained because they didn't make the progress that we think they should have made based upon a super-modified curriculum. You know, I think one of the things that we're trying to do is, you know, work with principals around concerns that some families might have. And again, oftentimes, parents will bring it to us, you know, for some type of retention. We retain very, very few students in this district. It's, it's a handful at most a year. And typically, it comes back to social, not necessarily academic. And it typically happens in the early years. So, you know, again, we're, we're talking with principals about that later this week.
Good, good. Because I just, I know there's some concerns with, you know, am I going to fill Algebra I for the year and not be able to go on to geometry? So, it's just an issue I want to keep at the forefront.
Member Woodland? Are you there?
Everyone. Yeah, hi. So, I'll try to keep this brief. I'll try. I'll, too. So, just to follow up on what Member Weeks said, that sounds like an amazing model. And not to throw any shade at what's going on with my third grader, because I have been happy with what my third grader is getting. That would be amazing if mine was getting that, those different switch-ups of groups. That would be fantastic. I will say, though, that the kind of progression of work does not go strictly, in my household anyway, of lighter as younger. I work all day with my kindergartner. So, just as a perspective. So, but going back to what, another comment about, I'm glad that Member Weeks asked about the professional development day, because that's been on my mind, too. The topic of how to deal with the gaps from this year versus others and the compression for next year, that point on a timeline for us would be amazing to have as we look forward. So, we would know that you're going to look at this compression on this May 11th PD day, and then also on this other date in the future, you're going to take the findings and apply it in this way. It doesn't need to be elaborate, but just having those target dates would be really helpful, I think, and would streamline a lot of the questions that we're bringing to you. So, it's just a comment on that. And I'm very glad to hear that that's what the PD was, was on today. One other thing I wanted to highlight, too, was back to the, the new staff positions. I understand the idea of saving what we have now versus saving what would have been, but looking at how our elementary students don't have counselors to draw on for the support right now, and these little kids have big emotions that they're going through right now. And returning to have the administrative staff, the school sites to lean on for dealing with those issues. It's also my understanding that the, the students on IEPs are all going to be assessed in some way for services missed during the closure. So, that would fall on the school psychologist's shoulders quite a bit already, wouldn't it? So, if they're also going to be fulfilling the tasks of elementary counselors, that seems like stretching one person very thin in each building. So, that's just something I want to comment to the committee as a whole, just as long as that is correct in how it would be done in the fall, assuming it's the fall. And, and then one other question, and that's, I think, have we gotten anywhere on a question on if we did furloughs versus eliminating positions? Those are my questions.
So, when we, I guess you're, again, my fan's running really hot in my computer right now, so some of the stuff's getting lost. But when I'm looking at, you know, the concept of furloughs versus laying off, I think we talked a little bit about that in Business of Finance. You know, again, our district, I believe back in '09, '10, we actually took furlough days. So, I believe every employee, including, you know, administration and, and, you know, non-contract people, all took two furlough days. And, you know, one furlough day can save up to $200,000. So, it's something, again, all of these different items aren't things that I can just make a decision on, or we can make a decision on as a school committee. This all has to be worked through with, with the unions in that sense. You know, layoffs in general, you know, there's RIF language in, in all the contracts in terms of reduction in force. So, those are items that we've already reviewed with our legal counsel. And, you know, there, there's one timeframe, it's June 15th, that we have to be, you know, concerned about. So, what we're doing is we're looking at, every different option. And, you know, again, I think it's, I hate using the term pick your poison, but this is one of those ones where it's, this is a dilemma. It's, it's a dilemma in terms of having, you know, neither, neither choice in terms of cutting this person or not cutting this person. They're, they're not good for kids. None of this is good for kids. That's, that's all I can say. And, and this is going to be a very challenging time.
Oh, thank you.
Go back to.
Oh, sorry. I, I just had one more thing that I, I wanted to end on, because this is an awful time. And there is no good answer here for what, what our kids are going to be missing out on. But I do want it, I did want to make sure to commend you for putting that, the health task force together instead of just waiting for Desi. And that kind of leadership is, is great to see. So, that's, now that's truly it.
Thank you. Take one last pass back to Member Silva, if she's listening or here with us. If not, we really do need to move on. The, there's some recommendations requiring action by the school committee, and then I do have some public hearing comments people have sent in. I believe the first item of recommendations requiring action by the school committee was for the WREA, which I believe is not ready. Is that correct, Daryl? That was about evaluation mostly, I believe.
Correct.
So, we'll pass that over until it's ready. The next item, I'll take a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the memorandum of agreement between WERSD and the Teamsters Local 170 paraprofessionals COVID-19.
So moved.
Thank you. Member Ember has moved it. So moved and seconded. So, if everybody can go back to mute. Daryl, do you want to have something to say about that?
Sure. Again, this, this contract, or this contract, this MOA aligns with what we shared with you in reference to the teachers that went through a couple of weeks ago. It just helps define some of the parameters for working for the paraprofessionals. I can tell you that paraprofessionals have been working diligently throughout this process and have, you know, have jumped in with both feet. So, this just kind of formalizes it in a way to give some defined parameters for them.
This has been reviewed by legal counsel? Legal counsel is potentially logging on, just trying to go back and forth between two meetings.
Yes.
Does anybody have, have questions about the enclosed MOA or the motion on the floor, I should say, Member Young?
Yeah, I've just got a quick question. I was trying to find the exact spot. Yeah, it was, I forget which page, but in section C, number five, just says, "Paraprofessionals shall not be required to perform the duties by using their own personal computers, phones, and other devices." Do paraprofessionals have district-provided computer hardware to be able to do this? Or are we working towards that?
So, Jeff and Barry actually connected with paraprofessionals who did not have access tech. So, again, all of this happened, you know, several weeks ago. So, Chromebooks were loaned out to paraprofessionals several weeks ago who didn't have access. So, we had surveyed them.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Stenberg is, is on the line. The other people have questions? All right, seeing no other questions, we'll turn to a roll called Vote. We'll go alphabetically starting with A. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Okay. Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? Hold Godbout Gustafson?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Godbout doesn't seem to be at the meeting. Haber, Haber, sorry?
Haber, yes.
Uh, Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Yeah.
Ember, yes. Kirshenbaum?
Yeah.
Yes, Kirshen.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longaleal?
Yes.
Mitchell Alstey?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar? Atmar? Come back to Atmar. Silva? Back to Silva. Smith, not here. Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Atmar? No response from Atmar. Silva? There's no response from those two members. Motion passes with those, those voting. Naomi, you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
This wasn't the question we had you on to answer, but when members aren't responsive, are they, is their vote, how's their vote recorded? Are they recorded as present or just, Atmar says yes. Remember, they're nay, they're not responding, or they're recorded in the roll?
They're just present.
Okay, present. Okay, Member Silva does actually say yes. All right, thank you. I will text back when we, when we need you. Thank you.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is to approve the superintendent's vacation carryover. I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved by Member Weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded by Member Haber. Is there superintendent, you want to just give us a quick rundown on what this motion is?
So, there's, there's a policy associated with vacation carryover specifically for the superintendent. I will not be able to use all of my vacation days this year, and
And, um, you know, the most I can carry over would be five days. So I have to, um, share it with the school committee to get your approval.
So motions are made and seconded, this is something we do vote on every year. Is there questions about the item on the floor?
Can I have a question about the, um, the, uh, motion?
Okay.
Um, I, I don't have my hands on the policy at this particular moment. And given this unprecedented time, I'm wondering if there is ability for us to, um, adapt the policy to, uh, allow for a, um, more days to be carried over.
Um, it's not a policy, it's in the contract. So the, the language of his current contract is that he can only carry over up to five days. So I don't think we can unilaterally change that contract language. It was not a policy per se.
Okay, I was just wondering, um, because this is, you know, an unprecedented time when, you know, probably given a normal situation, uh, he may have been able to take, uh, these, these days. Um, I think he has 10 days, uh, available that are unused. Uh, I'm not, I'm not speaking for, um, superintendent, but I'm just wondering if there is an allowance that would be, uh, you know, allowing us to allow him to carry over just for this just one time, given we're in this COVID scenario. So I just wanted to, to ask that question. Thank you.
I mean, the, the language in the contract is, is that he can only carry over five. Um, I think we'd have to like have some sort of discussion about amending the contract to allow anything different, be it carrying over more or less. Um, that's something we could have a conversation about at a future point. But Daryl, do you have any comments about that?
I, I appreciate member Kirshenbaum's, um, new response. I, and again, I, I think this is, this is going to be a very unique situation. I'm very good moving forward with, with the five days. Um, you know, with the understanding that I, I know this is going to be challenging these days, but we're, we're working seven days a week, no matter what, right now anyway. So I, I do appreciate that, that, um, that kind of offer.
The secretary notes there also is a policy on this. I apologize for my misstatement. Anyone who have a, want to amend the motion on the floor or make any other comments? I'm seeing none. Start with member Ayala. Melissa? I'll come back to member Ayala, member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? I'll come back, Gustafson?
Yes.
Ember?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbealeo?
Yes.
Uh, Mitchell Alski? Amy?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mills, yes. Um, Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar? Atmar, yes. Silva already mentioned, yes. Uh, Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Ayala? Mark Ayala as present.
She did say yes in the comment.
And Godbout? Sorry, me to follow comments, I'm doing, running the meeting. Uh, so I hear nothing from Godbout. I think he might actually not be at the meeting, let me see. Um, no, he's not at the meeting. All right, so that passes. Um, next on the agenda, I said I would return to, um, return to public comment. I do have some public comments that have, um, been sent. Um, I'm sorry, uh, I asked what we did, I did record you as yes. Are you yes on that motion? Um, yes, okay, Silva's yes. I have some public comments. Uh, the first is by Christina Naaman. Um, sorry if I'm mispronouncing her name, there's two comments. Um, one is that, uh, are some of the water refilling stations going to be delivered to Houghton Elementary School? The majority of water fountains have been closed down. This is the third year of this due to unresolved issues with water at those locations. Again, this isn't a, meant to be a dialogue. Daryl, if you have a quick answer to some of those questions, you can. If not, we'll.
We have a list of, um, those stations. I, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I'm sure, um, you know, if, if there are several closed in one particular school, um, we'll have a couple of those replaced.
Well, so we'll respond to, uh, to, uh, Miss Naaman, uh, by, by written somehow. Uh, next comment is by Heidi Leahy, President of the Watch U.C. Regional Education Association. Ms. Leahy says, "Listening to discussions tonight makes it clear to me the school committee members are already resigned to providing Watch U.C.'s students with a subpar educational experience that could actually be physically dangerous going back into schools in the fall. There is no way that you can make budget cuts to address even the 112 funding shortfalls that will lead to anything by, by complete catastrophe for the children of the five towns. WREA members are not willing to sacrifice their students' health or their education without first making a huge push to advocate for the funding needed from the state and the federal government to deal with the COVID in our public schools. Educators have no intention of accepting the dangerous assumption that corporations as their bailouts for their children's learning and their actual lives can be sacrificed on the altar of austerity. We will be your allies in advocating for funding and we hope that you will join us in fighting for the resources that will be essential for public agitation during COVID instead of just passively accepting the situation and expecting the employees to solve the problem." Uh, the next is, um, is, uh, um, member, uh, Sheila Dib, who is a select person from Rutland, says, "Listening tonight, re-anticipatory planning of use of cuts as well as E and D to fund possible state shortfalls in fiscal year 21. Like to ask if there is within the new COVID-specific legislation any method of reconsidering budget already approved to send to town meetings? And if so, if the requested revenue budget would ever be for a lesser amount than the $68,962,552 approved on 3/9/2020 as for MGL Chapter 71, 16B, deadline of 4/30. Are we also, uh, seeing on the municipal, are also seeing on the municipal side, there's a little expectation that the state budget will be finalized in time for town meetings, even as all of these meetings have been scheduled or planned for the end of June, and we will have to go on a small amount of information we have available now. Assuming the towns all have a vested interest in avoiding 112 budget as well, it will be very helpful for us to have a definitive answer on whether WRC, uh, number is final or if it may change in the next 45 days," that Sheila Dib. Um, and the last comment was again from Christina Naaman. Uh, "To your school committee members, I've learned that some other district cities are using paraprofessionals to reach out to families via telephone to ask a few scripted questions designated by administration, i.e. how is technology working? How is your child doing? Is there anything more we could do to help, et cetera? The paraprofessionals do not provide answers so that information is misstated. They just mention that they have heard the parent will document and forward the information so someone can reach back out to them if necessary. They then document the responses and provide to teachers and administration. This would be a consideration for principal, for teachers, administration, receive info in a timely fashion, we're trying to reach out, while simultaneously doing a variety of other tasks and so we can attempt to better meet families' needs. Thank you for your consideration, Christina Naaman." So I appreciate those public comments and administration. Or, uh, myself will be back in touch with, um, to, to recognize this as well. And I will forward, um, those messages to, um, uh, to, to the secretary. And if not, she will hound me for them. Um, the next item on the agenda is that we have unfinished business. Um, we had a motion that was, um, delayed to this meeting. This says the Watch U.C. Regional School District will not participate in the school choice program for the 2020-21 school year. The superintendent is directed to notify the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Office of School Finance that this district will not be accepting school choice students for the 2020-21 school year. This motion was, um, set to be, uh, to aid to time defined. The time defined was tonight. Um, so this motion in my ruling is back on the floor. Um, remember Lavoy was the original maker of the motion. I'll give the superintendent the opportunity to speak to it first and then give member Lavoy an opportunity to speak to, um, to, to the motions. I believe the motion was originally his.
Thank you, Chair Mills. So, um, again, the, you know, as we look at what we, um, could possibly be in store for in terms of, um, you know, either, um, reductions in terms of staffing, um, you know, increased class sizes, all of the things that we've been working so diligently on over the past several years to, uh, rectify. I, I think this, it does not make any sense for us to, um, bring school choice students into the district at this time. One thing we have to remember is, um, you know, again, probably 10, 15 years ago, uh, the, the thought was, well, if they all just came into, to the elementary schools and the middle schools, you know, we're all set because of high school. You know, that way it's not going to affect them, so we won't allow school choice at the high school. Well, the issue was all those kids migrated up. And, uh, you know, again, we, we don't want to be back in, in that situation again, especially in light of what could happen in reference to the budget. So I would recommend that we do not take school choice this year.
Member Lavoy, do you wish to speak to the motion? I think you were the original maker some time ago.
No, I appreciate Daryl, um, saying that. And I think part of that is, um, voting affirmative, voting on affirmative on this motion, is the motion, um, to not accept it. The other thing that I would just point out is, I know that Dr. McCall mentioned that he's working seven days a week and I definitely respect that. And I always look at this as an opportunity to not, not necessarily give him some time back, but when and if, you know, the request of the superintendent is not to engage in school choice, that should prevent people from outside of the district engaging with the superintendent's office to handle those types of requests. And I would prefer for the superintendent that we've invested in to really focus on moving our district forward. Not that I, I don't care for the people outside of the district, but I think we have a lot to tackle in this district. And we know that we're thinner on resources and, and administration. So I also want to keep that in mind.
Anyone else have, uh, comments? Member Dennis?
Yeah, I, I guess, um, so, so again, as, as I think about this motion, and we take this motion every, or a, at least the question of school choice is probably not, it's atypical that we word the motion, uh, the way that it's worded this year. But, um, you know, there's, there's a motion that's worded the way that it is this year, which is to not participate in school choice. And we informed DESI that we are not doing that. And I think that's been our position for the last few years. Um, if, if we were to not, not participate in school choice, it doesn't mean necessarily that, uh, you know, it doesn't specify or quantify how much we participate in school choice, right? Um, so if we were to have, um, the discretion to the superintendent, for example, to, to administer, uh, school choice at his discretion, that could be as many as, as, as many or as little as, as nothing. And so it always is curious to me, um, why we would take that option off the table, even if it's our vehement position to not to have to use it, particularly in the context of how we've just spent the last or a good portion of the last two and a half hours talking about how we can be creative, uh, with respect to, uh, anticipated cuts for next year. I, I'm not necessarily saying that I want to flood our schools of students. Um, but, you know, there, there are instances where, um, you know, our fixed costs in a particular classroom are, are set and there's revenue opportunity. It's not a lot of revenue opportunity, but there is some revenue opportunity. Um, and so, you know, again, to me to vote, uh, in favor for this motion, uh, means we take that option off the table. Um, for us to vote, uh, against this motion doesn't necessarily mean that we're flooding our schools, but at least it keeps this option open. I'm not sure why we would take that off, option off the table at this point.
I'm not speaking to the, uh, protocol of voting. I just want to clarify process. Um, if we were to give limited school choice lines, those have to be defined in a motion from the school committee, I think. If we just turned this down and didn't have some different motion, then I don't believe we can put restrictions on what schools people come into. But this is just my, my memory. Daryl, can you speak to the, the technical aspect of that?
Right, so we define what, what schools and actually what grade levels we would actually set, uh, school choice students in. So we typically could be very specific. In the past, we've been, um, more general, but there have been times when we've been specific, uh, because we do need to tell DESE what we're, uh, you know, which schools and which grade levels are available.
So, so just to re, react to that, um, my recollection is, is much of what you just said, except for the last part. Um, I recall us passing motions that were mostly generic. Um, and then other times passing that were specific to, you know, for example, I, I recall a year where we had some openings in Tom Prince and we were trying to, um, you know, fill some seats there in particular. So I don't believe, or at least I don't recall, based on our history, um, that we have a mandate to be, uh, very specific with regard to how we're participating in school choice. But, you know, I'm certainly not the expert there. And I don't recall that being, uh, our, our practice all the time.
It, it, and it wasn't, um, every single time. It, you know, in fact, I, you know, in my report, we had the information pertaining to when we didn't participate and when we did participate. And there were a few years where we were very specific about, uh, the grade levels in which we would take students in, um, and even the schools. Uh, we were, we were specific about that. Um, on the other, on the other one, so back in 1415, it was on a limited basis and based upon seat availability. Um, again, that can be a terminology that's, that, that could be used, uh, with this.
So are there comments about the motion on the floor? So the motion on the floor, uh, just to clarify, uh, as, as member Lavoy stated correctly, the motion is in the negative that we will not participate. So voting in favor of the motion is that we will not participate in, in the school choice. So a vote, a vote yes is a vote against accepting school choice students in, uh, in the next school year. Are there any comments or questions before we call the roll? Um, let's call the roll in reverse alphabetical order to give different people an opportunity to not always be first. Um, I'll virtually twiddle my thumbs for a second for member Young, in case he's making up his mind. Um, and now I'll stop. Uh, so member Young?
Young, yes.
Woodland? Linda? Um, just while I'm waiting, uh, there was a clarification and process question. I want to make sure that, um, that process is clear. A yes vote again is voting not to have school choice. So a yes vote means no school choice, okay? So Adam Young voted yes, um, to saying that we are not doing school choice. A member Woodland just rejoined the meeting. Again, a yes vote is against, uh, school choice. Member Woodland, are you prepared?
Yes, Woodland, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Uh, Silva? I'm back for Silva. Uh, a member Silva said yes. Uh, Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell Alski?
Yes.
Longbealeo?
Longbealeo, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Ember?
Ember, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Uh, Gustaf, uh, Haber, I'm sorry?
Haber, yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Godbout?
Godbout?
Uh... Godbout, the meeting, Dennis?
Dennis, no.
Brown, I was not at the meeting. Ayala? Melissa?
Yes.
Yes, Ayala, yes, so that, uh, that passes. Next item on the, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Christine?
Chris. Um, Christine, Christine is not at the meeting, uh, is not on the line. Um, so she's, she's not present. Um, is everybody, is there anybody who didn't vote? I think everybody voted who was present, yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the secretary's report. Um, we'll pass over the executive session minutes from March 9th. Those can't easily be distributed. Um, next item is, "Take a motion to approve the 1342nd regular meeting minutes the Watch U.C. Regional School District Committee held on April 27th, 2020, enclosed with a call to meeting." Has that been, is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved by Longbalio and seconded by member Weeks. I, again, thanks to Rebecca for all her hard work on these minutes. I'm sure it's a real challenge. Thanks also to Jay out there and Evan for the recordings. And Barry, is there any comments, questions, corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. We'll go forward this time. Member Ayala? Member Ayala says yes. Member Dennis?
Yes.
About, is that President Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Ember, yes.
Christian Baum?
Christian Baum, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalio?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell?
Abstain.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva said yes in the, in the the line, the, I can't talk, chat. Member Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Young?
Young abstain.
Young abstain, so those pass. Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report, financial statements. If you have questions about the treasury, those things, send them to Mr. Didi or Subcommittee Chair. Dennis, next item on the agenda is committee reports. Management's going to be tomorrow night. We have management issues to attend to. We're also going to talk in executive session about negotiations that'll eventually go to legal, but I thought that was, that was a process question for how we're going to proceed through that. So we will talk a bit about negotiations and then hand it off to legal. Education, Bob? Member Ember?
Yeah, sorry about that. So yeah, we're meeting on Tuesday, the 26th at 6:00 PM. No pizza. Sorry about that, folks. And if other members of the committee would like to hang out with us, just let me know and I can invite you.
Just for clarity on that, we do need to be careful about meeting violations or those sort of things. The, if the TV, if there will be broadcasts, I'd prefer that if people watch it on the broadcast rather than get invited to the meeting, just so we avoid OML things. Maybe people can eat their own pizza at home and watch it.
And/or popcorn. Yeah, that's fine. It's going to be recorded. Or at least I'll try it, you know, given my capabilities.
Members can participate the same way public members would participate. Other questions for education? All right, seeing none, Business and Finance. Mike, you had quite a long chair of comments. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, the next meeting is now scheduled for a week from Wednesday.
A member Gustafson has a question for Business and Finance?
No, it wasn't a question, but I did want to clarify because a couple of people have mentioned staffing priorities that we hadn't discussed that level of detail at Business and Finance yet. So that's probably why you haven't heard a lot about it. We haven't heard it, therefore there isn't any detail to be discussed yet. But I just thought I just needed to clarify that because I didn't want people to assume that we had already, you know, agreed to some level of detail that we don't know about yet.
Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda is Legal. Member Brown's not here. Member Lavoy, do you have anything for, for Legal as vice chair?
I do not.
A member Ember, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. Next item on the agenda then is Goals and Evaluation. Member Lavoy?
All right, so I talked about the timeframe at the last meeting, and I just want to kind of give everybody a heads up on what to expect. So I'll start kind of with June 1st. So June 1st, Dr. McCall should be on target to provide his evaluation, his input, his, his evidence for that. We are going to meet as a subcommittee, tentatively scheduled for June 3rd, and we'll meet with Barry at that point to make sure that we have the tool developed to complete online. And at the full school committee on June 8th, there'll be a presentation for the electronic, for the full school committee on completing that electronic evaluation for, for Dr. McCall. When we leave that meeting on the 9th, everybody will get, share the electronic evaluation tool to be able to complete the evaluation. We'll give a due date tentatively for June 14th to complete that. On June 15th, the subcommittee will meet, will divide and conquer in terms of aggregating that, that information and providing that to, to Chair Mills to, to put together the composite narrative. We'll review it on the 22nd as a subcommittee. After that point, we'll have a full meeting of the school committee on the 30th where we will review that and vote on the composite evaluation. So the key dates for the full school committee to remember are on, on 6/8, we'll have a meeting. We'll go over the electronic evaluation tool. We'll leave that meeting. You'll have time to complete that. After that, you'll vote on the composite evaluation, which will be at the end of the month.
All right, are there questions? Remember Lavoy? Seeing none, Facilities and Security. Adam?
We have not met at this time, and we are, do not have a meeting scheduled, although I'll be working on scheduling one soon.
Good, I'm sure you'll have lots of things to discuss as reality is hit for next year. Member Mitchell reports that there is no news from Audit Advisory. The Addax Subcommittee, we do have executive session soon. Naomi will join us, so we want to get to that. Building Committees, there are none. School Council Reports, I will say that Davis Hill met last, last week with discussions about remote learning and how things are going at Davis Hill was a good productive conversation. Are there other SimCo reports?
The high school SimCo is going to meet this week.
Okay, member Christian Baum?
The DOS and SimCo met remotely, remotely last week. We discussed the, the survey results and looking at making improvements based on the results of the, the survey.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is Public Hearing. I don't believe I have any more public hearings. I do not. The next item on the agenda is to enter, I'm sorry, next item on the agenda is New Business. Anyone having new business they want to put on the agenda for a future meeting? Again, not to discuss substantively now. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is to take a motion to enter to executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Daryl McCall, Superintendent of Schools, to return to public session. Again, this is, if we return to public session, we may continue this, this conversation about, or make any announcements we would make out of the executive session. So can I have a, and member Attorney Stoneberg will join us. So if this motion is made and, and accepted, we will return to public session. At that point, maybe I can text Barry and, and the HCTV people to, to come back. But while we're in executive session, we will be off the air. And within the executive session, we may also have to have some process for time. So does anyone wish to make that motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Ember, seconded I believe by Lavoy. Let's go alphabetically. Ayala? Ayala, yes. Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Yes.
Christian Baum?
Christian Baum, yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Longbalio?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills? Yes, that's me. Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva said yes in the comments.
Ember, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Wow.
Young, yes.
Anybody, did I miss anybody? I don't believe I did. So we are into executive session, so I am going to need to see two things. I'll need everybody except Attorney Stoneberg and members of the committee and the secretary, Ms. Peterson, to be off the call.